Good evening, everybody. The council meeting in October eighteen twenty twenty-two is called the order. If anyone is attending, this meeting needs headphone app fires. Please let us know. Okay, Kathy, would you please? All right, Donna, you do a roll call, please.
Yes. Councilmember Bode.
Here.
Councilmember Sherman.
Here.
Councilmember Gutierrez.
Here.
Mayor Nesco.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Schmidt.
Here.
Councilmember McDowell.
Present.
And Councilmember Peterson.
Here.
Thank you, Donna.
You're welcome.
Does the council have any late changes to the agenda? Does the city manager have any? Do we have any council or board reports to share? No. Is it, has everyone had a chance to review the items on the consent agenda? Yes. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as published? So moves.
I second.
All right, we have a motion and a discussion. We have a motion to second to approve the consent agenda as published. All in favor say aye. Aye. Post motion carries. At this time, members of the public are invited to make public comment on any topic that's not listed on the agenda. Donna, do we have anybody in question to make any public comment tonight?
Yes, we do, Mr. Mayor. Our first public comment is from Dean Jewett.
Good morning. Appreciate the opportunity to be here. I'm going to start out with a couple of positive things. I, I seen a street person that's notorious for screaming and yelling, and I've actually had to call and, and, and send reports on the app several times. I watched him run across the alley and hold a garbage can open for a, a business owner. I thanked him. He got some free french fries. When I was walking out of Teresa Johnson Trail, reviewing a camp that's been back in there, I walked out with a gentleman that had a, a real nice suit jacket on and a tie, and he was dressed nice, and he had a good attitude, and we had a conversation, and he was out doing a, a good job hunt. He, I actually met him the other day at my truck, and I gave him some fries because he was very polite. When we parted ways at the library, he asked me he was hungry. I gave him a card for a cheeseburger. I ran across a fellow citizen just today picking up garbage around Barrel Camp. If you don't know where Barrel Camp is, that's the camp that they all hide in by the Bank of America. She was going around picking up garbage there. I thanked her for her service. There was a posting about a tweaker that was doing a bunch of weeding on the sidewalk and whatnot by a builder's first source. You know, he was a tweaker, but somewhere down inside, he was a decent individual, and he was just doing what he thought he needed to do. So those are some positive things that happen in our community, and you guys probably all see those. But, and here's the but. We have a crisis in our downtown and our uptown in our community, and I do not believe that we have the sense of urgency and that we're following through on doing everything that we know that we need to do. There's a camp that they're defecating and urinating at Teresa Johnson Trail that's been there for a month. Now, there's some information that was given to us that said it might only be a week old. Well, maybe that information and the way that that information is relayed is incorrect. So let's try to figure out if there's incorrect information and get accurate information. But there's probably six or eight tent sites that are back there, and you guys all have pictures of them because I sent them to you. We have a camp that's been going on at our park now for several days. You had the lovely picture of the defecation in our parking lot that I had to clean up. That happens all over the place, not just my business. So what are we going to do? How are we going to do it? We have plans on the works. We know that. We have a study session coming up. I implore you to do your research on these ordinances that I've been talking about. See what works. See what doesn't work. Let's copy some cities where it does. The shopping carts, the things like that. I would rather have an ordinance and a tool and not have to use it than to need it and not have the tool. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next public comment is from Jackie Jewett.
Hello. So I am really glad that we had the, the forum that we did. What disappointed me about the forum is that yeah, the booths were set up around the back for individuals to go ask questions, but we've had a lot of feedback from people who attended, and a lot of people were disappointed that they couldn't ask a question as a group for everyone, excuse me, to hear. So I don't know if, I mean, that was purposeful because nobody really wanted to be on the spot to answer questions from the public. So, but it was very disappointing. But a couple of things I took from there. Mark Ziegler stated at the beginning that the memorial for the young man who had passed away actually caught, was more expensive to clean up than some of the, the homeless situations we have going on. I guess my questions are, is that cost per year? Is that cost per month? Is that cost per day? That, you know, so what, what are we basing this on? So one memorial site costs more than homeless situations that go on? I mean, I, just a question I have. What about damaging the landscape? What about environmental factors? All the trash, all that thing, all those things. What about the police department? I know that, you know, the city doesn't pay for the police department, but it's like, there's costs there. There's a lot of costs there with the officers. But one big thing that I really appreciated about this meeting was the fire chief. His information was absolutely informative. Formative. So he went on to say that, you know, his firefighters are not properly trained for any medical situations, right? It causes undue stress to them. This is not what they signed up for. They're firefighters. They're not, they're not medical doctors. They're not medical personnel that are able to deal with these situations. They're not mental health counselors. So they not, are not equipped. Also, the money it's costing the fire department. Talked a little bit about the four ambulances and being, being, you know, called away on these calls that, that are always occurring, right? They're reoccurring, some of the same people. And so what happens if there really is a true emergency? I mean, not that there's, is not a true emergency. Take that back. But what if it was when my mother passed away and nobody could come to my house because they were out dealing with somebody who lives on the street? That is reoccurring. That would upset me. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Next, we have Athena Ayers.
Hello, everyone, and thank you for allowing me to be here. I appreciate your time. I have a lot of commonalities with Dean and his wife today, honestly. I share some of their concerns. I share some of your concerns. I'm concerned about our homeless population. I'm concerned about how that impacts our community. I'm concerned about the cost associated with that and how that impacts our community. I agree that the information that the fire chief shared during our forum on homelessness was very informative. I've, I've spoken to our first responders, both our police department and our EMTs about the impact homelessness has on them, as well as our healthcare systems, as well as our jail systems. And I have come before you over and over and over again to help be a part of the relief in that. And I don't know that we're any closer to a plan, especially for this winter and the cold weather and increasing our capacity and bringing more people off the streets and into shelter, limiting or at least reducing the amount of public urination and defecation on our streets, limiting or reducing the amount of impact our homeless population has on our local businesses and our public resources. Because I still don't know that there's any more support than there was when we started the homelessness task force back in June. I truly appreciate the support and letters of support towards our, our efforts in achieving further funding opportunities. But there's an immediate problem happening right now. Right now, the weather is going to change in three days, and I am no closer to being able to increase our capacity and increase our hours of operations than I was in June. And the unique situation the Community Lifeline is experiencing is that we have people that want to work for us. We have people that would like to come serve our community and work with the homeless population. We just don't have the money to pay them. And so I'm asking you to please consider Community Lifeline when you're considering your response to our homelessness crisis in this community. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Mr. Mayor, we have one person on Zoom, and that is Colleen Carmichael.
Good evening. I'm Colleen Carmichael. I'm the Executive Director of Quixote Communities. I wanted to speak a little bit about the cost of criminalizing homelessness and what it's costing just from a report that was done in two thousand twenty-one. I think we've mentioned before that it costs taxpayers approximately thirty-five thousand dollars a year to supportive housing, which is approximately twelve thousand dollars a year. This report looked at Central Florida, actually, and they analyzed the cost of arrests, incarceration, medical and psychiatric emergency room use, and inpatient hospitalizations for thirty chronically homeless individuals for a total of a hundred and seven people. They found in just one county alone in over ten years, thirty-seven chronically homeless people were arrested one thousand two hundred and fifty times, or about four times per person per year. The booking cost of each arrest was a hundred and four dollars, costing taxpayers a hundred and thirty thousand. The arrests led to six thousand one hundred eighty-nine days of incarceration and a total cost of eight, eighty dollars a day, costing the community four million nine hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars for a grand total of six million dollars. The cost of supportive housing, giving these people a place to live and help where they need, whether they have medical or difficulty finding a job, was costing much less, an average of ten thousand dollars per person per year. So that reduces the cost to the community by approximately sixty-eight percent. So I want to be sure, I think it wasn't clear before, that we're talking about reducing costs and not adding costs. That's why all of our programs, including the ones that Athena provides, actually reduce the cost and take the burden of dealing with homeless population off of law enforcement, off of medical, and puts it in our hands. Who, by the way, I'll remind you, we are not also mental, medical or mental health professionals, but we're expected to manage the population without the funding. So it's a very challenging job. We are welcoming and wanting to do it to Athena's words. We just need the funding, and that's all we're asking for is funding and support. Thank you.
Thank you. And that's it?
That is it for now, Mr. Mayor.
All right, we're recessing from our regular meeting, dropping a public hearing. Chief Engineer Ken Gill has information for us about stormwater regulations.
Good evening, council. It's good to see your smiling faces on a beautiful fall evening. So two quick updates before I turn it over to our stormwater topic. I'm really excited to see the parking lot come together. The, the grading course, that's the course that goes down before the pavers and being put down yesterday. You'll start to see the pavers. You see them parked around like cars all around the thing, but those are stacks. Those are your pavers for your parking lot. I'm excited about it. So the other big milestone that we passed today is out on the street is the Brockdale paving project. So that is a big, staff have really been rowing the oars hard on that one for a long time, and thank you for your support on that. One final thank you. Thank you for Donna, for putting together the public notice tonight for our meeting. But I want to introduce you to Kenny Oberg. Kenny is a Sheldon High School grad of two thousand thirteen, and we are real excited to have him on board as our stormwater technician. So I'll turn it over to him to talk about source control.
Good evening, everyone. As Ken said, I'm Kenny Oberg, born and raised in Shelton and happy to be working in the city they've spent my whole life in. Our stormwater municipal system or MS four, separate storm sewer system. As you know, we operate under the MS, NS, NPDS permit. That's a good mouthful there. Anyway, so as part of that permit, we have some things that we need to check off our list to maintain compliance. Among those are ordinances or other enforceable documents that can be used and need to be in place for source control best management practices. I'll be referring to best management practices as BNP through this presentation. It's easier to say. So, long story short, these updates to the ordinances or updates to the Shelton Municipal Code and the additions to them keep us in compliance, and they focus on business source control inspections and BNP implementation. So at a business, let's say we have Safeway, they have a parking lot. It's not like the parking lot we're building. It doesn't let stormwater go through it. It has to be transported to storm catch basins, and eventually it'll outfall into Goldsboro or Shelton Creek. Even, even City Springs Creek converges right there. So that, that is what this is looking to do. We're looking to build a relationship with these businesses and the business owners to have a common goal of reducing pollutants, maintaining permit compliance, and, you know, building a stronger community together through this program. It's not oriented to be another enforcement tool or anything like that. It is set forth to have a common goal so we can maintain compliance. The business owners can maintain compliance, and we can end up with a cleaner city. So the permit itself requires us to not only have the ordinances, but also develop a business site inspection program and also have a progressive enforcement policy as part of that program. The flowchart that you each have is just a draft right now. It's already been changed a little bit in the last couple of days. But that is a good way to convey a progressive enforcement policy. The additions I've made lately are on more of the top end because I wanted to make sure that we, you know, let these business owners know that this is not just another thing to cost them money or be a pain in their butt. It's to maintain and or improve the quality of water and the city storm system itself. So there's more education outreach, technical assistance steps that has already been updated on that. So a source control BMP or best management practice. I'm sure you've heard the term BMP or best management practice and other, other occurrences. That's usually a pretty common, common acronym. This one is specific to source control, meaning it's not, we're not trying to catch something further downstream. We're not trying to eliminate it there or treat water there. We're trying to eliminate the source of the pollution before it becomes pollution. These are broken into two main categories. The more common one for businesses, they may already be participating in it, and they don't really understand that it is a BMP. Those are operation. Those are not physical structures or things you'd have to build. They are practices or procedures, or even something like sweeping a parking lot monthly. If you eliminate the source of the pollution, then it's no longer pollution. It's just rain down the drain. So that would be the first step in a lot of this, and that's going to be, you know, when we start implementing this inspection program, it's going to be outreach first, you know, introduce them to the program, the purpose behind it, how it's going to work and all that. So we can start implementing this and making sure that they're in compliance, and we stay in compliance with the permit. Structural source control best management practices are a little more. And I don't want to touch financially, you know, anything like that. But an example, just to get you thinking about it, is a library rain guard. You know, the parking lot there has been there for a long time. It's just asphalt. It doesn't infiltrate any rainwater. So in a year, especially like this one, where we've had a long dry spell, all those pollutants from cars and everything else accumulate on the pavement. When we get our first real good rain, it's called the first flush, and that has a high amount of pollutants in it. And the way this is designed is it will capture that rainwater or stormwater flow, and it'll filter out the pollutants that are in it, and then this water can continue on. And that's a primary example of a structural source BMP. They don't always have to be that big and ornate. It can be something. Well, this is another good example. The MTA parking lot, very similar to what we're doing for the Coda Street parking lot. It's permeable pavers. You know, it's just the gaps between them. There's no stormwater runoff from this. So any pollutants that get mixed in with the rainwater infiltrates down into the ground, stays on site. We don't have to worry about it going to Goldsboro Creek. So that's more for a new development, or let's say you're redoing a parking lot surface. This would be a structural source BMP, source control BMP that could be implemented to eliminate any more pollutant discharge into the waters. Another common, common one, this has been here for a very long time. This is the Calanand Pond or Stormwater Pond. It is actually an infiltration pond. The water does not go anywhere from here. It stays there in infiltration of the ground. So the pollutants that are mixed in with the stormwater from the surrounding road surfaces and areas never have the chance to discharge into any of the bodies of water around Shelton. A lot of businesses use this as well, big box stores, that kind of thing. They'll have enough room on site to do an infiltration pond. So all their stormwater from parking lots goes into the pond, infiltrates in the ground. We don't have to worry about it polluting waters or getting into the storm system. This is just downtown at Safeway, their loading dock. This has been here for a very long time. I grew up looking at this every time I went down to the store with my parents. I never realized what it was for, but it is actually a structural source control BMP. And that's just your door skirt. When you back the trailer up, it keeps the rainwater out and keeps whatever's in the trailer, in the trailer and in the building. And if you notice, if you look real close, there's actually a storm catch basin at the base of that picture. So that kind of, I like that picture because it kind of drives it home, like what we're really trying to achieve with this program. And on top of that, you know, something like for Safeway as an example, they have food preparation, they have food transportation, sale, that stuff. They have a parking lot. They have two creeks converging underneath their parking lot. So that's, it's not something that you usually think about, but those operational source control best management practices could be something as simple as training your staff, having a spill plan and a spill kit for whatever the spill may be. They have different kits for different spills. They have all encompassing ones. That's kind of the nitty gritty of what this program is about. And there's a lot of inspections to be done. And the last time I looked at the list and updated it, we had four hundred and eleven. That twenty percent of those will need to be inspected each year. So eighty-two. So it's part of our permit, as I stated earlier, adopt and make effective ordinance requiring source control BMPs. And then also, along with this, it gives us the authority to go on site and inspect for source control BMPs and make sure they are implemented and maintained. This is just a rough outline of how the source control inspection program will be set up. It is, again, it's already been changed slightly. It's a lot heavier on the top end for outreach and education with the business owners and providing technical assistance for training or where to get spill kits, how to use them, all that kind of things. I went through one of the inspector trainings put on through this stormwater, Washington Stormwater Center just a couple of weeks ago in Bremerton and got to do an actual site walkthrough with their inspection form and get some boots-on-the-ground experience with it. And what I noticed when doing that, because it was a large group, we didn't have a person that worked, who is at the Bremerton Public Works. You know, a person that worked there, standing right next to us. This program is designed so you either have a manager or the owner of the business itself right alongside you when you're doing the inspection. So you can not only build rapport with them and build that relationship, not just be the inspector guy that comes and makes you, you have to do this, you have to do that. It's more to educate them, get them involved in it, have them, you know, feel some ownership over it because they're a local business. And that way, we can build that relationship and just work towards our common goal. So the progressive enforcement sounds big and intimidating, but that's not the point of this. It's, it's a needed thing for certain circumstances, but the majority of this is just building that relationship and making the community stronger and cleaner at the same time. Again, got to stay in compliance with our permit. It's a, it's a doozy. It's got lots of stuff, lots of components to it. And on top of that, you know, at the same time, we're going to be reducing the pollutants that get into receiving waters or Oakland Bay, all of them. Yeah, that's what I have for you. If you have any questions, let me know. Thank you, Councilmember Schmidt, for the picture.
Donna, if anyone sent up a public comment?
No, they haven't, Mr. Mayor.
And you don't have any question?
Okay.
Just real quick, when, when does this all start?
So by the end of the year, the permit requires us to have the source control inspection program completed, and it begins implementation at the first of the year. The way things are tracking right now, we should be right along with that. The ordinances, by your grace, will go through and will be in compliance with that as well. As I stated, we have about four hundred and eleven businesses, and this is a living inventory list because things change, businesses change, they pop up, they go away. But as it stands right now, to get that twenty percent inspection mark, we're looking at a two a week. It's a decimal, like two and a half inspections a week, which, you know, that's manageable, and it's just going to, you know, create more of an outreach program or outreach opportunities right there, just from me going on site, meeting these people and asking them about their business. It's a really good way to get to know them and get them involved, to ask them about their business. And then as you do the inspection, they're walking through with you. That's a conversation piece. And then, you know, once we're done with the inspection, I can point out deficiencies or issues that we need to address. And from then, you do a follow-up inspection, follow-up technical assistance, all that kind of stuff. But that was a really long answer to that question.
Yeah, we're just going to want to make sure we're widely communicating this. Just, I know it's something we've been talking about for a couple of years that we kind of been anticipating it coming, but it's here. So surprise. Can't wait to hear all the surprises. So, but yeah.
I will be very well liked.
Yeah, appreciate the approach to, from a more of a partnership aspect and not, you know, be a, be a coach, not a cop perspective on this. It's, yes, it's something the community hasn't had to comply with for never.
I'm sure I'm going to run into people that are looking at me like, what are you talking about? And that's, that's what I'm going to try to eliminate with the preliminary stuff, the, the pre-inspection procedures, that kind of thing. It's just to get that program introduction. And then when you're on site and you introduce yourself and give them the purpose behind it and the ultimate goal you're, you're trying to achieve. Hopefully, they can take some ownership in it because they are local.
I realize that this is focused on the commercial side, but I'm also going to assume, is it correct to assume that it's probably going to generate some, some corrective action from us and on terms of the public conveyance, public system? Is that part of this as well within the scope of what we're doing, identifying those maintenance projects and capital projects down the path?
We have, and putting those in the capital facilities plan, the capital improvement plan for stormwater specifically is something that we're working on. And the one that springs to mind immediately is the dam that was built by the Corps of Engineers back in the mid-seventies that we had not been maintaining, not been taken care of, even though the, the transfer documents were requiring us to do that. So we started maintaining that. As a matter of fact, I think they were out there this summer maintaining it, but identifying those deficiencies and finding out a way to finance the improvements is, is a big part of this as well. We have to hold ourselves to the same standard we hold everybody else to.
Right.
And this is primarily business oriented, but it also covers multifamily residences. Anything that's two family or up, that's included in the list. So apartment complexes and all that kind of stuff. It's all in there.
And if I recall correctly, I didn't read the manual, but I glossed over the course of it, but one of the concerning areas could be when this process starts, there is a clock that also starts, correct? So once we identify deficiency, we do have a timeframe to react or respond to that, right?
And that is part of that progressive enforcement flowchart and the, the policy that will be implemented. As far as a time clock for us, you know, they're going to have a time clock for reaching compliance. And we have a time clock for getting that certain percentage of inspections done and immediately responding. Um and we have a time clock for getting that certain percentage of inspections done and immediately responding to actual complaint calls. Um and there is, you know, our code already demonstrates if it's immediate threat to public health and we take immediate action, that kind of thing, but most of this is. For the source control stuff.
Just need to make sure we're. The first year, I'm assuming we're gonna have some some moments where we're gonna have to respond quickly to. To a sir, oh, realize this is what's going on, uh kind of thing, and I know it'll be on the public side. Just from a budget perspective, wanna make sure. We're doing what we can to be ready for that, so.
That's why the council's support for the stormwater uh fee study uh was so important. And the uh uh just the, looking at the overall program. Uh making sure we can take care of the things that we are required by the state and ultimately the federal government to take care of.
The state ultimately is permitting us, the city, to allow our residences to.
Discharge.
Right, yep, so that's why I'm really concerned about those timelines, I think there's a regulatory arm that could come back and say. If it hasn't been resolved, the city has to step in and resolve, correct?
Correct, uh we're in, that all flows through the Clean Water Act at the federal level, so the state is permitted by the federal government. Uh and then the state permits us uh to discharge, kind of flows up like that.
So when we say that there are four hundred and eleven sites that we identified, how would a business know if they're one of those sites? Um and what is our process for managing that communication outreach piece?
That is still in development right now, I've been. Working on developing that whole program, but a lot of that is gonna be before these inspections start, it's gonna be that primary public outreach. Uh to give them materials and give them, you know, like a, I have a template going for an introductory letter for businesses. For the, for the introduction to the program. So if they receive that, that business or the owner, then that'll be part of it. As far as creating a database, I can actually just put the list. As part of an appendices for the source control inspection program SOP that I'm creating right now.
And I anticipate that's tied to the individual properties, not necessarily the business operating within that site, correct?
The properties, they do have the parcel numbers attached to them, sometimes multiple parcel numbers, or like in the case of a school district, you know, that. It's the same school district, but they have Evergreen, they have Mountain View, all that kind of stuff. So it is there, but the primary is gonna be the business owner and or institution. Overseer, owner, whatever you wanna refer to them as. Uh you can't just go with a parcel number, but the physical address is is a good key point for identification.
I just, I just wanted to remind everyone why such a program like this is so important, because we just had Oyster Fest and we. Feast it on, you know, the benefits of what we have in the bay. And also the salmon are coming back to spawn very shortly, if you haven't already, so those are very, um not just for our own health, but. For the health of our planet, but this is a important thing that I keep doing.
All right, any other comments or questions? Donna, have you ever reading an ordinance number one nine nine three dash zero nine two two?
Ordinance number. Excuse me, one nine nine three dash zero nine two two. An ordinance of the city of Shelton, Washington, amending chapter thirteen point zero two of the Shelton Municipal Code related to stormwater regulation.
Thank you, Donna, do we have a motion?
I moved it forward ordinance number one nine nine three dash zero nine two two to the November first, twenty twenty-two council action agenda.
All right, now we have comments and questions, I think Joe jumped the gun. All right. We have a motion and a second to forward ordinance number one nine nine three dash zero nine two two. To the November first, twenty twenty-two council meeting action agenda, all in favor, say aye. Post, motion carries, the carrying is closed, while we resume a regular meeting. All right, now on to the action agenda, city manager Jeff nine information for us about the LTAC grant recognition, lodging tax advisory committee.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, Deputy Mayor, members of council. Uh at your last meeting on October fourth, you uh heard the LTAC Lodging Tax Advisory Committee recommendations for grants in twenty twenty-three. Uh each year, the city accepts those grant applications, we advertise for that in August. And uh the the LTAC uh committee uh reviews those and then makes recommendations to the city council for your final approval. This year, well, this year for twenty twenty-three, the total recommended grant amount is sixty-eight thousand dollars. And there have been no changes since your last meeting on this topic, so I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
All right, do we have a public comment?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Right, do we have a motion?
I'm going to accept the lodging tax advisory committee's recommendations for the twenty twenty-three tourism grants.
All right, comments or questions? Nope, all right, we have a motion, the second to accept the lodging tax advisory committees recommendations for twenty twenty-three tourism grants, all in favor, say aye. Post, motion carries. All right, administration reports, Jeff.
Thank you very much, uh Mr. Mayor. Deputy Mayor, members of council, a couple of things to mention tonight, uh first, last week, we had the Spotlight Shelton event, I thought that was a great. Communication tool with members of the public that are interested in hearing about. Uh our, the ways that we are intending to address homelessness, that that information will be coming back to you in a study session in November. Um for your further consideration and then discussion on. Uh methods and and ways to uh finance some of those recommendations, so. I wanted to make sure you're prepared for that, and you'll have all the information with that before that meeting takes place. For the next item, I did wanna mention also that we have uh moved code enforcement, uh the code enforcement division. From uh the police department back to community development where it was initially housed. We're already looking at revising several of our code sections, and that will be coming to you on the November fifteenth meeting. And we're doing that in order to make code enforcement more efficient and effective, and for us to see. Uh uh see that progress, they're working incredibly hard at uh doing. Uh addressing those code enforcement issues in our community, but we think we can elevate that part of the program by housing that in community to community development. We're planning uh several things, one of them, doing the spring cleanup again, similar to what we did in twenty nineteen before the pandemic. Where we have a day that uh folks can utilize dumpsters that the city uh takes care of, uh bring them out to various neighborhoods. Uh for the weekend so that people can use those and clean, help, we can help clean up their property or help facilitate the cleanup of that. And uh uh we wanna clarify some of the penalties, uh remove some of the outdated language in those codes, as you all know. Our our development code, but our overall city code uh needs a few updates, we've been going through those. Um uh as deliberately, with deliberation as we can. So those couple of things I wanted to mention there, on your looking ahead. Uh next week, and at your study session meeting on the twenty-fifth. You will hear a presentation about the water comprehensive plan and uh some of the uh opportunities. We've identified there and some of the challenges and uh talk about, talk about with council ways that we've uh identified as a way to address some of those challenges. And at your meeting on the first, that one's gonna be a busy one, you have SMPD, uh the Shelton Metropolitan Parks District first. So we'll start there at five forty-five, and then on that agenda, a whole lot of budget stuff and some Latin. So you get to uh talk about the adborum taxes. For uh twenty twenty-three, along with the budget, uh the C Street Contract Landfill Award. Um and uh Bostrom Lane, uh which should be an interesting discussion as well. And with that, that's all I have, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Spring cleanup?
Yeah.
So our call record, it's been a couple of years since we've done this, and the last time we did it, a little disappointed out of the turnout, we had. We did a pretty good job of putting the vouchers out there, getting a huge, good partnership with. Services, yeah, it was really good setup, we did our thing, but didn't get a huge turnout, maybe we consider targeting. That a little bit differently this year to motivate people to clean up.
This was initially planned to be an annual thing, uh twenty nineteen in July, I believe, if I remember correctly, was when we uh did it. Over June and July, because it was a six-week process, uh but then twenty twenty happened to all of us. Uh so we haven't been able to restart that program, but we've got uh uh got the plan to set that up again. Uh for twenty twenty-three and uh continue that annually, moving forward. Um some weekends, we had a really great turnout for that event in twenty nineteen, and some weeks we got barely anything. Uh but we had a great partnership with the school districts who allowed us to use their parking lots for some of those sites. Uh in a great partnership with Mason County Garbage, I'm sure those two things will continue and uh a more targeted effort, I think, would be a good idea.
Lot of garbage out there. Uh free, no questions asked, place to dispose of it.
I think there's a lot of uh demand for this coming up, there's a lot of the COVID hoarding that's been going on, so.
I have a little bit off of that one question, did I miss something? Cause I feel like we had two different people kind of ask for money tonight, do we have money that we're giving away? Or do you have something coming up?
I'm glad uh our finance director's not in the audience tonight, but as you all know, uh we don't have any excess resources for twenty twenty-three.
Okay, and we don't have any grants that were, they're trying, need approved or?
No, but one of those recommendations that uh you saw from the homelessness task force was that we support our nonprofit providers. That are trying to address this issue with any grant requests that they might ask. Um and I am absolutely willing to write a letter in thirty minutes, uh if there's a grant opportunity that we think could help our community. Um that is the primary ask is through uh one of our nonprofit. Excuse me, nonprofit parties.
Okay, but we don't have any of those up, they're not, no one's asking.
Well, the county is, the county in their last two meetings, the last two days, it's indicated they're gonna ask us to. To pitch in for some um match money for community lifeline, so you'll be hearing about that.
Okay, and I, but I have not received that yet.
Just make sure I didn't miss something, because. We had two.
All right. Jeff, are, can we, is there a possibility to look into other porta potty companies that may be willing to put up the porta potties downtown in certain locations? So we don't have people potty. On the sidewalks.
Yeah, there, uh we can certainly ask around, um I do know that a couple of our nonprofits have installed. Uh porta potties uh directly adjacent to their, their facility. Uh whether that's helped alleviate any of the problems or not, I'm not sure, um but we can certainly ask around and see if that's, that's part of it.
I know it didn't work out well the last time that the city got involved, the porta potties. But I don't know how we stop it unless we provide a bathroom somewhere.
Well, and I'm sorry, we do have the public restroom at Neyland Park, but those are locked in the evening.
I imagine the problem is mostly nighttime.
Yeah.
Um except for the. The problem, the clock tower, I believe it's been addressed.
And are there also bathrooms at Woodfield and then also Callahan Park?
Uh yeah, there are, but yeah, but we would, uh we do lock those at, I believe at dusk, but I, there may be a set time.
I find one over on Park, it's lots of use and never lock.
How is it, are they damaging it at all, by the way?
Only when I lock it.
Cause that wasn't, that wasn't issue.
They messed the lock off, they cut the lock off, they brought the door open.
Please leave it unlocked. I mean, I I think, I think it might help alleviate some of the, some of the problem, I'm sure there's some that just do it just for fun. But uh. But if we could look into some, can we buy one and pump it ourselves or?
We can, we need to make sure that our parks and facilities staff have the capacity to do that. Um and if not, if there's an appetite to add a position to that team uh in order to perform that work.
Well, if you have your own, it's really cheap, just has to come up that once a week. So.
And they're, they're not expensive.
They're not expensive.
It'd be nice to check into it, I mean, it'll just alleviate some of the problems, you know, I don't know where we would put them, but uh definitely. Right in the middle downtown, obviously, but.
I recommend the Cantina's parking lot.
Well.
Based on the farmer's market experience, that may not be an ideal.
Well, they locked up, right, and I think that, well, they had graffiti as well, but. They got busted up because they were locked.
Sure, so I can, I can work with our parks and facilities staff to see uh what opportunities there are.
Is there any, any other new items for discussion?
Well, the porta potty conversation, we'll go on. I did see, I did see a uh picture in someplace where they built a like a little tiny home, you know, over a little. Little thing and then the porta potty in it, so where it sat, it didn't look like a porta potty, it looked like a little shed. So. That's the thought.
I would recommend something that's not burnable, though. Cement, brick, something like that, well, I don't know, but. Are we still homeless? Yes, yes, they are.
I remediated it properly.
All right, so if there's no other items for discussion, our next council meeting will be Tuesday, the first at six PM. We also have a study session Tuesday, the twenty-fifth at six PM, this meeting is adjourned, meeting at six forty-five PM.